I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with our activity reports. We've looked here for a couple of quiet weeks for me. Oh, sorry. Before we start, I'll note for everyone, we only have one microphone tonight, and that's on the camera. That's way in the back. So if you can't hear the audio, we're sorry. We'll be back in the council chambers next meeting. We're just here for some construction over there. But if people can remember to speak up, I'm usually loud enough that it's not a big deal, but others are quieter than I am. Let's see here. Otherwise, for boards and committee meetings, we had... I don't think I have anything. I'm picking them up here. The only thing I thought... Neil, yeah, Tarek and I participated in an impromptu phone call. It wasn't on my calendar. That's why I can't find it. With Lisa Dameth, when we talked a little bit about downtown revitalization. Not much to report from that. She's going to be exploring some state grant funding. Anything that might have come from the Infrastructure Act that might apply to us. That's all I have. Megan?
I had the winter events meeting, which we just can discuss what we can do to have a more cohesive holiday season this year amongst the different things in town. And a lodging tax meeting where we talked about ways to advertise Panville, including a promotional video. And the library board meeting, we just kind of talked about where we are in the process.
Chief?
Well, after I got back, I had three meetings in two days. So it was Planning Commission, and EDAF, and the Liquor Board, where we're planning to go for fundraising for our department.
Paul?
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Go on then to our department heads' reports. And I will say we've got a 6:15 public hearing, and I know Jacob would like to probably get out of here. So we'll just scoot right along. Chief?
Thank you. So just wanted to touch base. A while back, we talked about guys some concerns with our coverage in the county, that sort of thing. We were going to reconnect back in July. Just kind of let you guys know how things are going. Happy to report that things, I think, are going well. We have seen a marked increase in the presence of the sheriff's office down here. They're doing some different things scheduling-wise, so our need to be out there has drastically decreased from what it used to be. Most of you guys know Cody is currently out in Philadelphia finishing up his DRE training this week. Squad update in your council packets. You have the information for purchasing a new squad. That is, the Tahoe isn't desperate to replace.
I know it's not here tonight.
It is not here tonight. It hasn't been here all weekend. Driving back from Veterans Park, it went back into limp mode, just sitting at a stop sign. So the alternator's been replaced, but that alternator failed. So it's back in the shop. Update on Colby. He's gone through about his first month or so of training. He's on target to be done at the end of August here. So starting September, we should have everyone who's here back running a normal schedule. Night to night is coming up for everybody who's interested next Tuesday. The community picnic, like usual, over at the park. We're going to be doing a couple of different things with that. Throughout the course of this year, we've had some, I guess, conversations about window tints in town. So we're going to be putting on a test, or tint, for anybody who's interested in knowing whether or not their window tint on their vehicle is legal. We're also going to be bringing out the drunk goggles for anyone who wants to see how they perform on a variety as well. And then just an update on hiring. So we've got two postings currently out there, the SRO and the Full-Time Officer. SRO, we have one application so far. We'll be doing an interview with them like the next Wednesday. As far as the full-time position goes, after Officer Davis, I don't believe we've had any other applications come in that I'm aware of. I checked the post board tonight before I came here, and there are currently 184 different postings. So that number continues to climb.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you. The school rehab project that we had over for straight up to the high schools is complete. Our wastewater pool dropped significantly in the range of $8,000 gallons per day or so. That's very good. Water demand with the dry weather we've been having is up roughly $150,000 a day. We're still running about 60 to 70 percent of capacity, so we still have plenty. Obviously, the circus is coming. I think it's on Thursday, on Saturday. Concert in the park, the last one is on Thursday night, so they've been going over quite well again. Splash pad and plenty of activity at the beach. Airport Safety Day, that closes, I think, July the 12th, 2020, roughly. See some crews out there. We're going to be painting pictures somewhere in the next month, so see some jail sandboxes and that sort of stuff. Just a reminder to the residents, the long curbs and sidewalks, if you could please take care of your weeds. This is supposed to be the community in best we can. And also our tree trimming. There are some, we've had a few dogs about their trees over hanging sidewalks. Residents, please take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tarek.
All right. I'll go through the boards first and then talk about some of the meetings. I was at the Budget Finance, the EDAF Planning Board, where we discussed Soul Regard. And then we also had the Liquor Board and the Safety Board. I also was at the Lodging Tax meeting with Megan and the Winter Events. Also was with Sean with the call on downtown revitalization with Lisa Dameth. There was also a state auditor hosting an event on TIFF, so I attended that as well. We also had a meeting with, I just remembered, Highway 55.
Thank you, yes.
Talking about what changes we can do there. Chuck was on that call with us as well, Ron. And hopefully, I think the most we could get out of it at this time is they were willing to put in a right turn lane into where it goes to the apartment by Community Gardens. So we don't have a timeline yet, but we're looking to do that. And then, of course, Chuck and I, or Chuck and the applications to get, what do you call it, RRFP?
FB.
FB, RRFB. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that as well. I'm not sure on the timeline of that also. Good news, we're here because we're painting City Hall, but also we're putting in video equipment. That should be going on all week, and then hopefully sometime next week, we could get that finalized. Then also, one thing I want to point out is about a year ago, we decided to switch over some of our investments. The reserves that we hold are invested. Most of them are either bank account or money market. And with rates rising, we did not see the rates in those accounts rise. So made the switch over to US Treasury, which, as you know, are probably the safest of the safe. And year-to-date, so the half of the year so far, our income from those investments are $107,000 versus $54,000 last year. So we've already made an increase in our return of $52,000 to $104,600 this year, so hopefully that continues.
Thank you, Tarek. Neil, did you have anything to report before we...
The only meeting I had, Green Roof had their meeting last Wednesday. And the biggest thing happening there, they're, I believe, ordered, or they're real close to getting the second handicap ban. And they've been fundraising and donations, and they're doing very nicely. And with that, they'll want to build a three-stall garage. I believe they talked to the city a little bit about that. Supposedly, they sent a letter or something like that. And then they thanked the city for the $5,000 donation and the $3,000 in kind for doing smoke plowing. So it seems it was last year $8,000. On the door, they had to fix the handicap door. Something in the motor or something. Let's see where they got that coming.
Thank you. Anybody here for our public open forum? Right. Move on then to the adoption of our consent agenda. Includes the minutes on page one, vouchers on page two, totaling $214,529.98, along with a park and tree board member appointment and two gambling applications. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I heard it from Sony first. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Nobody brought me my gap. All right. All right. Chambers requesting a street closure for the annual Commerce Craft Fair, or the Craft Fair and Car Show. So Jacob, a vote and everything here. Anything else you want to tell us about this?
Just brought with our, Doris, coordinator Meyer Wu, which is also on the committee, and with her is her grand son. And he's going to be on the committee too one day, so he'll be learning early. Yeah, we just have our basic Craft Fair and Car Show, same road closure that we did in the past. It was mentioned that we wanted to make sure we got all the businesses notified. I did contact all the businesses. Right here's the email, so if anyone wants that proof, there's that. It was talked about also to have the city listed as additional insured on our insurance. I have that with me as well. Send that over to the city staff to make sure they have it. The only concern I have is just making sure that Chambers not singled out by the only business to have the additional insured on their insurance. I know there's other organizations and other groups that take place on city property, so all I ask is, they're being asked to have the city as additional insured, like the farmer's market or the soccer team. Just maybe, like Community Gardens that you mentioned earlier. Just things like that. I just hope that they're being talked to as well to make sure their insurance covers what's needed.
Yeah, and I know in talking to Belinda about some concerns, she indicated that there was a directive that came down from the League of Minnesota Cities, which is our insurer, and said that for, and I don't know what the criteria are, but she and Jennifer, I believe, Tarek was involved in that as well, said, yep, we need to get stricter about enforcing these things. And just, if it makes our insurance carrier happy, it's what we've got to do, so it's where it came from. It's not a city dictate, it's a mandate.
Sure. I figured it was, if you were the chain of command, I guess, in the process, I just, we had just asked other organizations are being helped with that too.
Yep. With that, welcome to car show again. I'll bring half the vehicles and get all the trucks, because I'd like to do it that way.
Hopefully, the Rinkieville staff, staff, the fall box.
No promises. All right. Any questions for Jacob? Otherwise, a motion would be in order to approve the street closure.
I'll make a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce temporary street closure from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Craft Fair and Car Show. Shouldn't it be earlier than that, Jacob? Because doesn't it start at 9:00?
Yes, it does start at 9:00, and if you wanted to, are you able to do that earlier, that would work too.
Yep.
Or they're around 7:30, people start going in, probably around 8:00 or so.
All men until 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
All right, so there's a motion by Sony to approve the temporary street closure on August 12, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Is there a second? Seconded by Breck. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Right. Airport. I know we do have a 6:15 public hearing. If those here for the public hearing don't mind, we're just going to let the airport folks go first, because then they can get out of here and keep everything else moving on.
I'm Dan Rowley with Friends of the Panville Airport. So we've been busy planning for this year's airshow. Real similar to last year's format. We were able to secure some additional performers, so we split it up into two separate shows. One at 1:00 and another at 4:00. And then following the second show, we've got a band that's going to perform requesting until 10:00 o'clock. Legion is going to provide liquor sales. We're just looking for the same use of the airport again, the city property. We were for the airport for parking and postings and no parking signs along Veterans Drive there in Airport D Drive.
I'm good for all of us. Dan, the only question I have is the waving of the fencing around the beer garden. Is that a good idea considering we're surrounded ourselves with airplanes?
Yeah. So the big issue there was, we wanted to keep the liquor from leaving the grounds. And the airport is surrounded by corn this year, so we could get away with a little less fencing. And the other thing is safety. Snow fencing is great for keeping people out, but it's also great for keeping vehicles from running through. So if we needed to move emergency vehicles through for some reason, the snow fence could delay some stuff. So we thought, well, with the advantage of having corn and not having to move things out of the way for emergency vehicles, and we did see that the snow fence wasn't required at Town and Country Fest, so just following that trend, trying to make it as safe as possible and contain the liquor.
Yeah, Paul?
So I don't have an issue with most of this, with the exception of that. I understand your concerns and your reasons for it. The biggest reason is to contain the alcohol and the alcohol sales in that area. And as you've said, it's surrounded by corn, which is a great place for individuals who are underage to go and hang out. Every event like this, you know, there's a difference between what happened at Town and Country Days and an event that is strictly a beer garden and band. Those are two totally separate types of situations and incidents, or types of events. And really, for, you know, safety, I mean, you don't go to pretty much any sort of a, any event like this that's a band with a beer garden where it's not contained. You know, we require for fire, for Backdrop Bash, Fire Fest does it. I just spoke with someone the other day with Donovan Hutchinson. Their event, very similar, disfenced and, this isn't an uncommon thing. And I think there's a big distinction between what we did with Town and Country Days and what this event is.
Yeah, and speaking from the Legion, Jeff Thompson was asked to be here to represent the Legion in regards to this. And I think from our aspect, we have a fairly good history of the staff that is aware of age requirements in reading IDs and that. And we would not send an inexperienced person to an event like this to be serving. And I'd like to come up with some specifics about other events like this where there is no fencing. And I have been to a number of them, and it depends on the community and the type of people in the, in the community, so. And I should add that the insurance requirements have been submitted to Belinda. She has those. And should we all sit there?
Yeah, I guess I don't know how the rest of the council feels. That was just my question, is that propellers and alcohol probably don't mix. But I'll defer to your judgment on that, Dan. That applies to you too.
Yeah, they definitely don't mix.
No.
But...
Yeah, I'm definitely good with the rest of it. Let's do all of it. I have some concerns. Just because Town and Country Days went, I think, very, very well from an alcohol enforcement standpoint, I'm more inclined to say maybe we should try it, but I can defer to the rest of the council on some thoughts there as well. Jeff?
From the Legion's aspect, it doesn't matter to us. It's, you know, we're not involved in setting up or tearing it down. It's just we're there for one specific purpose, so whatever the council, we have no dog in this fight.
I guess I would entertain a motion. Otherwise, if there's further discussion, we can do it anyway.
I think from my own viewpoint, we should try it for this year, see if it's going to work. If it doesn't work, then we know the answer.
What does not working look like?
Violations.
Somebody like, you know, running into it. That's what's, I mean, I just, if we're going to see what it looks like if it works, I just want to know what the worst we're looking at for what doesn't work, more or less, I guess. I'm trying to picture in my head like where the fencing would be and where, what we're talking about to be in it that way.
What I told Doris at Town and Country Days was, I hope this either goes really, really well, so that we know we can approve it again, or it goes so poorly that we know we can just deny it next year, and we don't have to try and find a middle ground. But I think if there is something where maybe we have concerns, we just need to get together right early in the process and figure out if there's a way to address them, rather than waiting until three weeks before the, you know, next year's show. I think we're all adults and able bodied and able to do that, so if there's a concern, people are sneaking off. They need to address it and figure it out. But I would claim Town and Country Days went well. My concern is less with law enforcement. I get your concern, Chief, but my thought is more just, if I meander underneath the plank. So I'm good with giving it a shot.
How will the area be defined?
Yeah.
Where across this line, no drinking. On this side, it's okay.
So we don't have pot lines to define that. It's more to keep the liquor contained at the event, so there'll be a fence at the gate. And we'll have our volunteers there and signs posted, no liquor paths at this point. We don't want the liquor to leave. That's the main thing.
I think it's important for the council to understand we're talking about more than just where the alcohol goes. You know, I have no doubt, Jeff, that your people will not serve underage people, and that you're going to ID them appropriately. But on, and in these types of events, there are more than one way to have these types of situations happen. You know, we've kind of taken the stance and the approach because we have it set up the way we do with Backdrop Bash, that we try to be more responsive. If we open up an entire area like this, especially one where we've got cornfields easily accessible to anybody, you know, any underage kid who wants to try and come through or go back there and hide and whatever else, we're now in a position to where we're going to have to take a more active role to make sure we don't have issues and violations going. Which means, rather than being more reactive, we're going to have to be more proactive in assessing that. We don't want, we want this event to be successful, and we want it to be safe. But there's more than just where that alcohol goes, that issue here. There's a reason these things get fenced. There's a reason that they are contained. And it's because of the nature of what it is, so we can kind of control as best we can what's going on. Whether there's minors in there drinking, how they're getting their alcohol, I have no doubt Jeff's people will not serve them. But that doesn't prevent those people from turning around and handing it off to their friends.
All right. Well, I would like to, Jeff, I see your hand up, but I'm wondering if we're at the point where the council can entertain a motion here. Otherwise, I'd like to just break into our public hearing, and we can come back to this, because we are 10 minutes over that. Jeff, you have...
Just a historical aspect, where the JCs used to run the tractor full down by the river, the requirement was two fences, more than two arm lengths apart, so people couldn't pass back and forth. So there has been some progress made in that too, so.
Chief, you sweep me. I think I'd prefer to see events there. It is a far different event than Town and Country Days.
I agree. I will make that motion to approve Resolution 2023-20, authorizing retail on-sale liquor license to dispense intoxicating liquor at the community festival, the airshow dance, beer garden, use of the city lots, and airport report for event planning, use of the city's generator, allow camping within the city limits, and post no parking along Veterans Drive and Airport and Court Streets.
Right, we have a motion, as stated on our action sheet, with the exception of the beer garden with fencing made by Sony. Is there a second? Seconded by Breck. Any further discussion? Just looking at our update, Friends in the Legion need to provide proof of insurance, and I think, Jeff, you said that's already been done. And Dan, I think you've already done that.
Yep, and we're going to have our performance.
All right, anything else? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we return to page 116 of our agenda. We'll take a recess from our business meeting and open a public hearing on the allegation of a nuisance property at 711 Minnesota Street. So we haven't done these before as a council, but it is an option that we can do underneath our nuisance ordinance by returning over to our city administrator and city attorney to provide proof of why this constitutes a nuisance underneath our ordinance. And then the council can vote on that after hearing from the property owners. Hear from staff, the property owners. Council can ask questions of both after that, and then we can take a vote. Bill, anything else that we should be doing?
No, I mean, you know, once after the, after the hearing, I think there needs to be some discussion of factual findings and, and what order you're making, whether there is a nuisance or is not. And then set a dead, if you find there is a nuisance, you should set a deadline to clean it up. You're supposed to make a finding about value of the property as well.
Okay. So on the 711 Minnesota property, Tarek?
Yeah, as you know, you know, we were instructed to go and look for nuisance properties around town. We identified 711 Minnesota back in April, end of April, and notified the resident by sending them a letter with time, or suggesting time to clean it up. That time went and passed, and then we noticed that there was any change in the property. We went back again. This is before Bill Spooner sent the letter out on the abatement hearing. And also, we noticed that there was no change. And then the letter did go out on 6/22. And on 7/18, so July 18th, we visited the property again, as you can see. And, I mean, it looks like there was some changes to it, some improvement, but still the, much of the violations are still there, so. That's the update on that.
So do we have, are you Miss Sanders?
I'm not. She, she currently got a new job. They're struggling financially. But my husband and I helped clean up that property. And I did take pictures this morning.
All right.
They're relevant.
So they might be. Let me just give us a, do we have a copy of these pictures for anybody who wants to present? Just so that we have public record of what we're all looking at here. Well, that's my concern, that you may...
I would say that Tarek should offer those photographs representing what the property looked like on 7/18. And explain what depicted in the pictures violates the ordinance.
I'm sure you took pictures as well today, right?
Yeah, and I've been helping them help with their yard. My husband and I are just over there again mowing, and we did a lot of mowing and beating and moving stuff from in front of the garage. So there was a lot of work over there done.
So I'm going to, I have a document here. It's a sheet. It's got three pictures merged on one. I'm just going to mark it as exhibit one. Tarek, are you offering this as proof of the violation?
Yes.
Okay. What about, what's described here or shown in this picture constitutes a violation of our ordinance?
Well, the chief can tell you more about the vehicles, but as far as I recall, they're unregistered, as well as the trailer. And there are some, I don't know what you call it, but on the back side of the house, some items that would be a nuisance, as well as on the front yard as well, just missing these items.
Okay, but what, I mean, how specifically does this fall, I mean, other than the vehicles, if they're unlicensed, where does it fall in our ordinance that we can make those findings?
The accumulation of items in the back of the house and also on the front of the house. You can see some of it there, and then the two vehicles, and then the trailer. And I'm not sure, was the trailer registered?
It's, it's not yet. He's trying to get another title from his mom. It was his dad's. But they've been struggling financially, and she hasn't even got her first paycheck yet.
All right. So, ma'am, can I just ask your names, so that I know first how to address you properly, and then...
Rebecca Krueger.
Rebecca, okay. So, Ms. Krueger, how, what have you been doing to help get the property cleaned up?
There was enormous clutter. There was enormous clutter, I'm assuming in those pictures, I've seen the original pictures, but in front of the garage doors, there was like uh fencing with a bunch of stuff behind it. We managed to get all that taken care of, hauled in a bunch of scrap that was laying around the yard, uh, tires. There was extra bikes, we got rid of those. I did a lot of weeding and my husband mowed. I, I personally think it looks a lot better than it did.
Yeah, no, there have been some changes there, yes.
I guess I'm, I'm looking at it, certainly if you want to see these, Tarek, when were these pictures taken?
Seven eighteen, those, yeah.
So a few days ago. Um, I'm just, I'm looking at here, there's a five gallon, or three or five gallon water jug in the front yard. Uh, there's some stuff, it looks like it's piled up between the garage and the house, or maybe, no, that's the bike. Uh, then there's a propane tank, some shovels and some other stuff, some other things next to this camper. Is that stuff, has that been picked up and cleared out of there?
I didn't know it was a problem.
Okay.
But it could be.
I can tell in the back of the house that there's, there are some items.
And then it almost looks like the garage is starting to fall down. If I'm looking at this picture on the top right, correct?
I don't know, I know it's that.
That's a storage shed in the back.
There's a storage shed in the back, is that on the verge of collapse, do we know?
Uh, is it plastic?
It's the plastic one.
Yeah.
It's more of a cabinet, more so than a.
Yeah, and he put the door on it last night.
There's also a fridge sitting out there.
That's temporary, they're, uh, power got shut off, so they're airing it out, cleaning it out, putting it back in the house.
Was Matt coming back?
Um, I think he got a little nervous, so. He just went out with my husband, I can find out if they're out there.
I'm just thinking, because if they live there, then we could hear from the people who live there, that would probably be easier for us.
Okay, you want me to sit up, see if they're there? Okay.
It's hard for us to make findings if we're not hearing from the people who live there or own it.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
I suppose you can show those pictures.
So I see the pictures.
I was going to suggest you email them to Tarek, and then maybe we can see if we can cast them up on the screen.
That would be, I mean, at least then, you could see them.
Yeah, and those are the ones things that's in your order, you'd set it down like.
I wanna try, wanna try and, wanna try and, why?
Right.
Yeah, that's a very focus, I'm pleased.
As long as you make the progress.
Yeah.
I mean, the rumor that it circulated for a while was that us going after nuisance properties was a way to draw up money. I think it's hard to hire such spendthrifts. And I thought, no, this is costing us way more money than we'll ever make, and.
Yeah, yeah. I think if you was just part of some, you know, poor things, you know, place that things there.
There, there's parts of every property.
Oh, this one, yeah.
No, or not, probably.
Oh.
As long as we're not moving, is, is the, is the the whole shell height on the trees outside, well, that's seven feet or eight feet.
Straight, those fall under a sidewalk, it's seven.
Remember when we used to have somebody to check that record, though?
Yeah, I could do that.
You're right, on your next.
Talk about Christmas, Dom.
Okay, well, we don't have to close this yet, but uh.
Thank you.
We're back, okay. So I guess, Tarek, before I turn it back over to the property owner, uh, can you just describe the specific provision of our statute that this falls under and what we're concerned with?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but it's uh, the nuisance of the accumulation of items, as well as unregistered, unlicensed, and inoperable vehicles.
Okay. Alright, so we've just been looking, uh, we have pictures that were taken here of the property on July eighteenth, we've admitted those. Um, we discussed a little bit, Ms. Kruter, while you were out, if you wanna email your pictures to Tarek, we can try and get them up on the screen, or he will at least be able to pull them up on his computer. Because that way, then we also have a record of everything that was put in. I'm happy to look at your phone, I just don't have a way of.
Right, I was wondering that, too.
Yeah. So, I mean, if that's the best we can do for tonight, we can
Okay.
do that, but I'd prefer if you can email them over, it's Tareq, T A R I Q at paynesville M N dot com.
So it's T A R I Q?
Yeah.
Okay.
At paynesville M N dot com. So, for the both of you, I guess, with the stuff that's left there that needs to be cleaned up, what, in your opinion, is, is left? And we talked about the fridge in the back is temporary, is our understanding, how temporary is that?
Yeah, it's a freezer we brought up to, to clean up on the side, that should be brought in tonight.
Okay. Oh, and then, I'm sorry to cut you off, but just so that I know, what's your name, sir?
Matthew Stine.
What was that email address again?
T A R I Q at paynesville, P A Y N E S V I L L E M N dot com.
Paynesville dot M N.
Paynesville M N dot com.
Gotcha.
And we might just be looking at what was here. Alright, so you said that fridge was brought, or the freezer, excuse me?
Yeah, the freezer should be brought in by the end of the night, um, and then there's, there's a few things out back yet I wanna clean up yet. Um, which is um, around the little plastic storage shed, and then around the back door. There's a little bit of stuff around there, you got two that I wanna get cleaned up and taken care of. And I did get a, the other couple sets in the driveway right there in that picture, there that, that's tabbed and licensed now, two. So I got that out with.
Does that run and drive?
Yeah, it does, it just, it does, we just don't drive it, 'cause it, it needs, it needs a starter in it, is what it needs. And then the camper, camper, I'm trying, I'm waiting for my mom to give me the title again, because my dad, my stepdad gave it to me before he died, and then he died after he gave it to me, so, and she found a hundred and seven oxygens, so it's hard to get her up to DMV to get the replacement title for it. And I'm, I'm waiting on doing that to get a tab and license, but I even thought about trying to go up there and get, just buying the tabs for it, but. And then, and then the snow blowers in the front yard there on the uh, right hand side of the house there, yeah, I, I was gonna bring them in the garage also. That's very helpful. I mean, a lot, a lot's been eliminated, and a lot's been cleaned up in the last, you know, two years, I mean, I mean, Weyner's been trying to work on it for a while. We're getting it little by little, so I just can't do everything by myself, you know? But it is getting better slowly, for sure.
So.
And there's no tires alongside the hu, the garage, neither, or more?
I took, took care of that.
We took care of all that, you know, so. I mean, it's just slowly working on it, and, and everything on, on the back shed also got took care of, we took that down. Also, there's a, there's a boat cart back there on the shed, and, you know, there's some siding pieces that were on the shed also, that we took care of, took all that down, guttered that. Also.
If the council finds that there's still a nuisance remaining on the property, do you think thirty days would be enough to clean the rest of it up?
Should be, yeah, we're working on it, little by little, there's not much left out in the backyard, if that's where you're specifically talking. I mean, if it's not, just, let me know what else I gotta do, it doesn't matter. I mean, I, there, there's a little bit of stuff alongside the shed, like, there's a, a three-wheeled tri-pipe bike, pedal bike alongside the shed, that's kinda hard to put, put in the shed of the garage. And like a four, four-wheel pedal bike that's sitting there, too. But, yeah, if there's anything else that we can do, about thirty days or so, or whatever, I'd be happy to keep working on it.
The, the, I, the one that you mentioned that sounds like it might take longer than thirty days is the title for that camper, I, I don't know.
Correct.
Yeah.
If you've gotta get it through DMV, I don't know what's realistic, I'm not a DMV person here, but I'm guessing, oh, just, I mean, if they got that.
We had shoes and, shoes and box, by Malaga.
So, most DMVs can print duplicate titles in office, and so, if it comes to it, you can get a form for the duplicate title and bring that to her, she doesn't necessarily have to go to the DMV herself, it is a little easier if you can make it there, but.
So, so, can I go there and get the title for her, is that what you're saying?
She needs to sign the form, but if you can, but if she can't make it to the DMV, as long as she signs the form, you can bring that, she'll have to sign off on the title as well.
Yep, that's this, yep.
Yeah, but as long as she signs off on everything, like, she doesn't actually have to stop in at the DMV.
Okay, we're trying to get this form.
Uh, so, I can't remember the exact one, but we do have it on the city's website as well, if you go under residents and forms, there's the DMV section. Otherwise, it's um, if you just Google Minnesota duplicate title application, you should be able to find it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So maybe that is not more than thirty days.
So if everything works out, it would, should be possible in thirty days.
Oh. Bill, at the risk of kicking the proverbial can down the road, is it possible to recess these hearings for thirty days and come back, or do we need to be making findings tonight?
The ordinance says you're supposed to make findings, but it doesn't say you have to make them tonight, it, it says.
I know, we can do it at our next council meeting.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking, rather than serving notice of another hearing and doing everything again if stuff doesn't get cleaned up in thirty days?
Well, there's no, there's no hearing at the end of thirty days, I mean, you know, if you, if you make findings that there's a violation, and you give thirty or sixty days, or whatever you decide, you know, and it's not, and it's not cleaned up at the end, I mean, that's when the process of the city going in and doing it, which, in my recognition, is always that you get a court order before you go on to private property, clean it up, but so, so that would involve some time, you know, so I think, you know, that's not gonna happen overnight, so if it didn't happen at the end of thirty days, but he knew the thirty days was up, there's an additional time period that he would have to get it done, because we're not gonna have a court order the next day. I don't know how, I don't know how long that process takes, but you have to file an application for an administrative warrant. So. But, my suggestion would be, maybe, rather than kick the can down the road, is to give more time, if you think you, you might need to, and and allow them adequate time to, to get the job done. Be, be lenient on the time, but don't, I, I don't think I'm excessive to continue a hearing, I mean, you could, I guess, you could say, we're gonna adjourn the hearing and we're gonna recess it till the council meeting, next council meeting or the council meeting after that, if you really want to, I suppose.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with you guys if anything.
Yeah, my husband and I, too.
No, I know, and I know that there has been progress made on the property over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Uh, I get that it's slow going. Just because I think the issues with that camper could be problematic, I, I don't know.
Sixty days?
Well, I hear Bill's advice, but rather than making findings and, and just issuing an order in sixty days, I'd kinda like to know, you know, is the DMV jerking you around, or are you running into issues with the probate court, and you know, like, I, I don't know what might happen, so, I just, I think there are unusual circumstances here, and if we come back in thirty days and nothing's done and nothing's happened, we can issue an order for corrective action the next day, I mean, that's, you know, sort of the risk, but, I don't know, that's my thought, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, or all your thoughts.
If she works at the Payneville one, or whatever, I can go through Payneville one, and I, I can, I can just quickly ask her to kind of help me go through it, go through the process, or whatever, if.
With that camper, do, do you know if it's still under your stepdad's name, or?
It, it, it is, it is, he gave me the title, and then I signed on the title, and then he died.
Okay, but, but your mom was like, is the surviving spouse, correct?
Correct, correct.
Alright, so yeah, we should be able to get through that no problem, it's just she's gonna need to sign, eh, but if it's still in his name, she is gonna need to sign in front of a notary, so. Depending if she's there, if she's, has an.
You know, I, I don't know, he signed it on his name, so, I think it's just in his name, you know, but they are, they are, they are married.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that, I don't know if that, I don't know if that affects anything.
So it does make it a lot, it does make it easier.
She might need a death certificate.
Yeah, she will, yeah, that is, she will need a death certificate. No, because death certificates usually say, you know, they're buried or anything, it's on the death certificate. But, um, yeah, we will need a death certificate, and.
So that, I'm kind of a.
Yeah, but the main thing is, um, she is actually gonna need to sign a form in front of a notary as well, and so that's probably where you're gonna have the hardest trouble, 'cause that's where she needs to be.
She's not, she's not, I don't know, she's a little tired for her kid, or, or the parents.
Okay.
Without, without that.
We could maybe find an insurance agent that has a notary and they could come to the house.
Yeah, insurance or bank.
An insurance agent, a lot of them have notaries in their offices, whoever she has her insurance with, and they can come out to the house and override it.
Okay.
And a lot of city halls or townships will have access to a, a notary.
Yeah, we do have notaries at the Payneville DMV, if you can get her there, um, it is a good chance that we could take, get it all taken care of in one day.
In case of?
Yeah.
I, I highly doubt that, she's already blocked, blocked, which is passengers by Malaga there, so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm not.
I mean, with oxygen chains and everything like that, it's hard to get it all the way out there.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm not sure with any of the other DMVs, if there's a closer one, if they have notaries or not, but.
There is closer ones, but most of them, most of them, I already tried going through the process, and they're, and they're picking on me about about trying to get a duplicate title, because I'm not the registered owner. And, and it's, it's my, it's my, my mom and my stepdad that's registered owners or whatever, and they won't let me do any, they, you know, it's hard running around with me, so.
Yeah, so that's why I thought maybe we should go to mom.
Could I, could I get, kinda get tapped on it?
Unfortunately, that is gonna be that registered.
Tended by the tabs owner?
Unfortunately, it is gonna be the registered owner has to buy the tabs, and especially now, the system, the system did an update where if the owner on record has passed, it won't let us do anything with the record until it's transferred, except for get duplicate titles. If the owner on the record has passed away, it won't let us sell tabs to anyone.
Well, the, the other thing is, you know, the, the record, I think, should reflect that that, the one vehicle is missing a starter, which, I mean.
Starter in it, and transfer it just skips, and, and I'm trying to work out if my kid grew up years.
I mean, you know, and I, I don't, I don't know if those vehicles have moved, um, in a while or not, that's, I mean, that's.
They have moved, they have moved for a while, no.
That's the problem, is I think, you know, the, the observation of Paul is that it's been quite a long time since these vehicles have moved, so. I think they're, they're probably not operable as they sit there, I don't know what it would take, make them operable, like.
Thirty bucks, thirty bucks is, is the one, you know, it just sits there, and it just sits there for, for my son, so. I mean, I mean, thirty dollars, and I couldn't, you know, couldn't start up in there, I was gonna start it up, you know, and drive. I mean, I mean, thirty dollars and then, you know, putting the starter up in there, just start it up, you know, and drive.
Well, that's, that's what you need to do.
Right, 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 well.
Drive them on block most twice.
Right, right. I just, I, they are insured and they are capped.
Yeah, it's, you know, part of being operable though is to actually be able to move it. The ordinance requires that they be licensed and they be operable. So, I mean, being licensed is good, but they also need to be operable.
Yeah, I think they're operable too.
Correct. Um, Tarek, what would you estimate the value, if any, of all the offensive items described?
Oh boy, I'm not good at that. I don't know where to begin.
Okay. Well, my thought is, and I, I get it, I don't want to, but I still think knowing the progress has been made, especially even in the last few days, we go one more month knowing that if things are still moving in the right direction, we can issue an order at that point, and if it's not, if, if those cars are still sitting there and inoperable, we don't have to give time. I mean, that's sort of, maybe I'm just feeling ridiculously generous, can I, that's, that's my position on it.
That's our whole point, is we want it cleaned up.
And I don't wanna go through the bureaucracy and having to go to court for it and doing all of that nonsense.
So you're gonna adjourn the hearing tonight and, and, and call the, call the hearing back order at, not the next council meeting, the council meeting after that?
That would be my preference.
So then I think before you close this hearing, would you want to announce that our proceedings being recessed by the council and the date of time?
Anybody have any objection to going that way?
Nope.
Okay.
You think that would be enough time to make more progress?
Oh, yeah, to make more progress, I try to make, yeah.
Okay.
If I don't make no progress, then, then, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate you guys giving me some time and working with me, and as long as you guys keep, as long as I keep making progress, I'll definitely work on it.
I'm just gonna say this, we, I know the chief has been working on it for quite a while, and, um, I'm, I'm taking you both at your word tonight, because we can't see the pictures that you took, that things aren't better.
I know, I keep trying to send it, but I didn't want to send.
It's the building.
The building, yeah. So I'm, I'm taking everyone at their word.
I can keep sending it after you go outside.
But I'm also going and I'm saying, look, last chance.
Right.
Like, let's, let's get it done. So, um, with that, we will recess and adjourn this public hearing. We will reconvene on this public hearing at our second meeting in August at six fifteen P M. The date on that meeting will be August twenty first at six fifteen P M. We will reconvene this public hearing on seven eleven Minnesota. Is it? Oh, yep, twenty eighth. We will reconvene this hearing on August twenty eighth at six fifteen P M. We have exhibit one here, and if you want a copy of it, we've got one up here that you can have. I'm gonna give Kristen this one for the minutes. Can we pass that down to Kristen, please?
Can I come and get it?
Yeah.
Can I just circle some of the problems you want to see improved to?
I was actually gonna say that.
Yeah, that, that'll help me, you know.
I can meet with these guys and go over exactly the issues that still exist. So bad.
Yeah. Yeah, and I keep making progress.
The big, the big thing though is, man, is you gotta stop adding to it.
Yeah, I could, I could, I could, I know.
Go add some of it and then add one to it.
Yeah, I know, I could, I know.
All right, so we'll be back on this one, August twenty eighth, six fifteen. We then had a second one to start at six forty five.
Can I ask them one question first?
Yeah.
Would you guys be willing to accept, accept some help?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
Because there are some individuals in town that need to do community service.
Yeah.
And...
I asked Lena about that a cou- a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, years ago.
Did you ever connect with May?
Um, I, I asked Tarek to try and connect with her. I don't know if she did or didn't.
Oh, so contact May.
I may still wanna do it, um, because there's guys that need to work off, uh, their, um, community service and...
I, I would very much appreciate the help, very much so.
All right.
Yeah, very much so.
I can get ahold of May too, then, yeah.
Yeah, um. Why don't I, the next day or two, I'll get ahold of, um, May and then Rebecca, so okay, let's just stop by and give you, give you a heads up. Okay, ever seen Dominic a while, I mean, he's...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, no problem.
All right, so we'll reconvene August twenty eighth. Um, Chief, can you run over to City Hall at some point and make sure it's locked for our next one? We got a message that somebody went into the building, so, you know, at some point. Thanks. All right, so we were supposed to have one at six forty five, and she might be on her way, so let's just give that one a little bit more time. Let's go back to our business meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Where did we leave off? Oh, yes, the mitigation plan, thirty one. This is the resolution sent over to the, um, emergency management. Sterns County needs us to adopt this as part of their county, um, mitigation and management plan. Basically just confirming that we are going to cooperate with them and assist in the coordination and planning for hazard mitigation. Not much else to say. It's at the county level. They're just asking us to adopt it, uh, in part to ensure that their funding and everything comes through. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one, adoption of the Sterns County All Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Right, and a motion by Hertzberg, um, adopting resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one, adoption of the Sterns County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Reposed, none. That motion carries. Right, thirty-four is the revised media com contract. There's nothing to vote on there. This is being posted for informational. Is this technically an ordinance? So we'll go on to page seventy-one, and Ron and Verchuck, if you can tell us about the lead service lines, please.
All right, thank you. Um, I think everyone's aware that the lap over of twenty twenty-four, we have to have our every single, uh, service line inventory and submit it to the state. However, the state did offer some grant funding for it, and this is just a very simple application to acquire some of that funding.
That's one of the grants they talked about when I was at the L M C.
So, with that, is there a motion to submit the lead service line inventory grant to the Department of Health?
I'll make the motion to submit the lead service line inventory grant, application to the Minnesota Department of Health.
Right, the motion by Hertzberg to submit the application, is there a second? Seconded by Grek. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed, none. Motion carries. Let's skip over the squad car in case the chief comes back. We're into the street closure. I can talk about that a little bit. As the chief and I were discussing night to night and how things would be set up, we talked about, um, closing off the street so that we can get trucks in and out, allow for the test your tent operations and things of that nature, along with the field sobriety testing, so just give us a little bit more room. So, um, we're just asking that Washburn to be closed from south of Fire Hall to Main Street.
Isn't that what we've done before?
He and I were trying to think, and I think we did some years, but not...
I know we have, because they did the water ball fight over the street, the fire, yeah. Yeah, that is what we did.
Who's, who's gonna be doing the surveying of the lions' tail?
Yep, and they're...
Probably gonna have tall ground here.
Close the other street, not Washburn.
No, where's Washburn? From the Fire Hall, no?
I mean, I'd be okay with also closing Main from Coronas to Washburn, and that would give the little L shape for more traffic control. Right.
I'll make a motion to approve temporary street closure to close Washburn Avenue from south of the Fire.
Yeah.
To Main Street, to State, Washburn, and forward to...
Motion by Soini to approve the street closures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed, that carries. Okay, Tarek and I have talked about the next one, so I will just move on. Tarek was invited out to New Richmond to speak with, um, city officials and citizens out there for, um, Nature Energy's open house on Wednesday. He sort of called me and asked what I thought about it, and I said, well, I don't think that the city should be paying for your time. Is there a way that you can bill Nature Energy for it? And then also I wanted it to go in the council just out of the abundance of transparency, so that we have minutes that are recording and things like that that are being discussed. Tarek did discuss it with our auditors. Any, um, like staff time and mileage, uh, we can bill that back to Nature Energy. Just didn't have an issue with that. And Nature Energy was willing to, to pay the mileage or whatever else we sent to them. So, they're asking us to go out there, not to say anything in particular, at least I haven't gotten any notes, just to sort of talk about our experience of working with them and the things that they've set out here.
I believe that just shows it's not a good way to handle, you know, here's your chief, Paintsville, and...
I mean, I, I thought maybe I'd wanna go, because I kinda wanted to hear what, um, those who are in opposition in New Richmond have to say. And what are the concerns that are happening out there? And what are the residents out there going to bring in? Um, I'm guessing the location of the site they're planning out there is much different than what we have here. So, if there's, are there similar concerns? Are there different?
There are different up there too.
Right, everybody's gonna be looking at things differently, so that's why I said I may go right along with you. I can get your report.
You can give us a report.
Yep, and we can certainly give a report back and...
I too had the same concern, and I saw the mayor and his children walking today, and I went over and visited, and said I had one concern with me, and it was this, because I thought we have to pay it. Well, it doesn't look good, and there was a lot of questions about how the three of us were paid to go to Dead Park. So if nature will cover this, I'm more than happy. And I think it's important that we represent people and share that Friday night meeting was so much good information, that you have a lot to share. For Johnny Shannon.
Yeah, well, they can't, you know, of course, Nature Energy can't pay us directly. I don't want them to pay us directly. I do think it's most appropriate coming from, but the city is going to reimburse us whatever we would get for any normal meeting, and that's part of why I don't want Nature Energy paying us. I would hate to say, well, yeah, as mayor, I'm gonna go out there, you're gonna pay me so much for a speaking engagement. No. If I'm going out there, it's my per diem, which is what we've already did, and then that's gonna be invoiced to Nature Energy, so.
And mileage.
And mileage for whoever drives, yeah.
With that, I'm good. I'll make the motion to approve the attendance, Sean Rankin, Jake Dupree, option to speaking engagement in Richland on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth.
Right, there's a motion by Hertzberg as on the action sheet. Is there a second? Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion?
I don't think either way you've been, you know, depending on if you, if they paid or the city pays it, but I think it's gonna go, you know. Either way, it's gonna be, either you got lined and guy, or you got somebody's staff, so it's just...
No.
Whatever one works out the best is, you know, I think it's important you guys go and figure out what's going on over there, and it is gonna be a different location, different setup, and I think it's good that we'll give that contrast.
Yeah, I think end of the day, we could have, I mean, we would have satisfied all of the legal requirements just by saying, yep, we're going, and we're gonna invoice Nature Energy and not reporting back to the council, not discussing it publicly. But I think just, you know, in full transparency and openness, we should just have the conversation and just do it. So, I agree. Here, someone's always gonna be mad. We can never make everyone happy, but all we can do is make the information available. All right, so we do have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Thielen, to approve the attendance as stated on the action sheet. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That motion does carry. Right, Bill, Shay's coming back.
Shay starts today.
Perfect, let's hire her. Okay.
Yeah, she's on board, passing background checks.
Well, it's good she didn't get into too much trouble in college.
Now since she was here last summer.
She was there five minutes and I left, or half hours. It is fine, it is fine, so. Love to have her. Actually, I know who's had her in less than three days. She'll feel right, so.
So, with that then, we entertain a motion to hire Shailen Desam as part-time liquor store clerk, effective July twenty-four, and a grade one, step one, as stated on the action sheet. Well, hold on, step one. How many years has she been with us now?
She was with us for one summer.
Two summers. This is her third summer.
If she was gone, she, she was here last summer, she's...
I thought it was two.
It's two.
Maybe it's not two full ones, but I think it was.
She didn't come back here for the holidays, because she wasn't gonna come back.
But she did the year before holidays. Yeah, no, it's two summers she's been here.
We could spend so much time here, man.
Well, I, the council can move however they want, but I guess I would recommend that we, uh, reflect her time with us in the past and maybe hire her in a step two, because the training she's gonna need is nothing. She was left alone for thirty minutes today.
So she, the first year she worked for us, she was summer help part-time.
Yeah, it was seasonal help.
Very. And then we gave her, we should come back, so we want her up to that, yes. You're correct.
Hey Shay.
Yeah, no problem. I'll make, I'll make the motion to hire Shailen Desam as part-time liquor store clerk, effective, oh, my, that's small, I can't read it.
July twenty-four.
July twenty-four. Step, uh, grade one, step two, up to thirty-two hours per week.
All right, so we have a motion by Soini to hire Shailen Desam as stated on the action sheet, effective today, and a grade one, step two, uh, thirty-two hours per week. Is there a second? Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That carries.
Thank you. I don't think the chief is coming back. He said throw the bottle away.
Okay, so we do have, um, Tarek has the property owner for the property at, or resident at eight ninety-nine Flanders here on the phone. So I'm just going to open that public hearing at seven oh eight. And I'm gonna, uh, Tarek advised me that there is a request to continue this hearing, but I wanted to call it and open the hearing at least first, so that we have a record of what's going on, and if we're pushing it out, why we're doing that, so. Tarek, can you talk to us about the request for an adjournment or recess on this?
Uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Schwann went to City Hall. She said there wasn't a sign posted, so she wasn't aware where the meeting was taking place, and she is unable to come here at this time, so requesting that we postpone the hearing until September.
What were the allegations, nuisance on this property?
Um, the property should actuate quite a bit. There were four vehicles there that were unready to serve, and, uh, since then, three people...
Hold on, we're gonna pause just because there's a diesel truck pulling up, and I just wanna wait for audio to clear up. My running over there, see if there's a film there. If we need the show, make the show. Thanks, Brock. All right, so now that we can hear ourselves think again. Yeah, I think... Yeah, I think, given that there's bad progress made, I'm with the adjournment, until our next council meeting, August 28.
Oh, which one of the... Which one of the...
Do you have a top registered, is the red one?
Oh, red one, the one that got the...
Yeah, the vehicle that's not registered, is that the red one?
Yeah, that'll be one of the...
Okay. That way. Have the wheels registered?
No, brown.
Well, that's the question, Bill, what do we define as being operable, because in addition to being registered, it has to be operable. Operable to be, car turns on, or what?
Vehicle moves, yes.
Yeah, drive.
It needs to be drivable.
Okay, um, if you didn't hear that, it needs to be drivable.
Yeah, so, if they're not in the same parking spot, they're drivable, so that's an concern.
Well, I think, let's, um, well, let's just do, put it on the same night, August 28. We'll recess this until August 28 at 6:45. We'll be back at City Hall by that time, the construction there will be done, and then we can, we can revisit. Tarek, if in the meantime, this has been cured, we can take it off and move forward.
Can you answer, um, excuse me, can you answer my question? Well, I have a, I mean, they suffered a city of apartment, so if they're not at the same location, and then they're clearly drivable.
Yes.
And will be registered.
Yes.
Okay. And then just to confirm, this will be tabled until the end of August, you said the 28th, and I should plan to be at City Hall.
Uh, I will send you the details of the next meeting on August 28, yes, but if it's resolved before then, we may not even need to have this.
Right, you'll hear from us either way.
Correct.
Yep, August 28.
Yeah.
In that email, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I'm somewhat newer, present to Paintsville, is the, is the Fire Hall the same as the fire station?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies for not understanding that, when you mentioned that earlier. Um, so I'm assuming that's by the elementary school?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you'll hear from us for sure, we'll be at City Hall at the end of August. If everything is cured and resolved before then, we won't have a hearing, and we can just move on with our lives, but otherwise, August 28, at 6:45.
Okay, thank you all so much, I appreciate you helping to ending the situation.
You're welcome.
This will be adjourned until that date.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, um, we have our next public hearing at 7:15. Give us two minutes to talk about the purchase of the new squad car on page 74. The chief did have to leave, he also sent me a message that he's not going to be back. Leasing things came up that he's dealing with. Talked about this with budget finance, and he talked about it a little bit in his report, the Tahoe is, I don't even know if last legs is a good enough description of how that vehicle's operating these days, so... Guardian has one, it's a V8 instead of a V6, but they have one. The fund is there, it has sufficient money in it, we can't get any other squads through the state bid or anything like that. I did see the 1040 might, capital M, might be able to get us an F-150. But I don't know that we need an F-150 for the patrolling and things like that that we do around here, so... I think, given the inability to locate a car and the need to replace one that's already there, and our inability to get competing quotes. If somebody can cite that in a motion, I'm good with moving forward with the urges from Guardian, as stated on the action sheet here.
It was in the plans to be replaced this year anyway, was it?
It was, yeah, we'd ask the chief to maybe find a used one, or hold off another year, just so that we didn't have two cars in the same calendar year for replacement, but we're not gonna make it.
Motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 Dodge Rango from Guardian, the amount is $60,000.109.42. The up bidding of the new squad car and the striking of, stripping of the 2012 Tahoe. Because we could not get competitive bids, we were going with Guardian.
So, motion by Soni, as stated on the action sheet, with the notation that we couldn't get competitive bids due to the current vehicle market, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That carries. Right, it is 7:16, we have a 7:15 public hearing on the property at 353 Sterns Avenue. Again, we'll handle this like we did the other ones, I have a picture here from Tarek, which I'm assuming he's going to offer, so I'll mark this as exhibit one. And Tarek, if you could talk about why this presents as a nuisance, specifically under which sections of the ordinance? The value and all the other things that we need to make findings on, and then I will turn it over to the property owner, who can respond. And if the council or anybody else has other questions, we will just continue to discuss until we close the public hearing, and then the council can make findings.
Uh, yeah, also, end of April, we went around checking on properties, this was one of the properties that we identified as having nuisances. And there was inoperable vehicles, including a camper, and accumulation of items, including tires. And, uh, when we went back again, uh, in end of May, before the letter was sent out, uh, we noticed that there was some improvement, but still, it wasn't all cleaned up. So then we had Bill draft a letter for this public hearing, this was on June 22. And then since then, the, the photos that we're taking, that you're seeing right now, that was on July 18. And as you can see, almost all of it has been cleaned up. The only item that I see there is a trailer, which I think is unregistered, and then there's some kind of small trailer left there, but all the, all the other items have been cleaned up, and I think the yard looks in pretty good condition.
In your opinion, are there any remaining nuisances?
Uh, I think the trailer, I'm just not sure if that's...
Yeah, there is a lifetime license on that trailer.
Okay.
On the camper trailer or the utility trailer, just sign up.
There's license on both.
Okay.
The, the small utility trailer that you're referring to...
Yeah, I could...
Not to the, I guess it'd be...
Yep.
Yeah, this here, that has a lifetime license on it.
Yeah, well, like I said, there's been a significant improvement.
And then the camper trailer you said is licensed as well?
Yeah, yeah. That's my son's, that's... Is there anything more that you would like to answer, if I may ask?
If they're both licensed, then I...
I know, I know, the, the small trailer is my son's, that has a lifetime license on it, and I know the camper trailer has, is updated license.
Yeah, I have no issue with that, I think it's done.
Okay.
Current sales?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, the, the small trailer is that in the...
That's life time, yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's a lifetime warranty, the camper, if I'm not mistaken, he did it actually earlier this month, he was still a bit behind the back.
Well, then, utility trailers are hard to document.
No, that's what I'm just saying, you know, I'm just asking, there's...
I've got one in my backyard, if we start going after utility trailers, I'm gonna have a problem too.
Well, that's what I, I just, that's what I'm asking, Jeff.
Yep.
No, it was good.
I think you're good to go.
So then I think that that would...
I'm just, I'm on that, that's why I figured we'd show up to you.
Anything else you wanted to tell us, then, before we close the public hearing?
I guess I don't have nothing else, I mean, if you're, you're satisfied, you know, on that aspect, so, I mean... That's all, uh, thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you, I will step on out, and I will, but you continue on business.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, then, I think we can close our public hearing, I would just ask the council for a motion, noting that we heard evidence regarding this property, and that any nuisance has been evaded, so therefore, do we even need one, Bill? Or can we just close it and be done?
Our findings are, it's been taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I could do really simple findings, or, or, Tarek, you know, just say that, you know, the whole hearing, the evidence was that both the camper and the trailer are licensed, and the tires have been cleaned up, the nuisance has been evaded, and the nuisance has been taken care of by the property owner. And I think that would be simple, I mean, but I think, you know, just for records, it probably would be good, since we held the hearing, to, to make some findings, you know, and just throw them in the file. I don't think it has to be real fancy, because there's not a problem.
Well, let's bring that proposed finding to our next council agenda, then, Tarek can write them up, and we'll, we'll take it further.
We could attach a copy of that beautiful exhibit to the findings.
No, the people...
We have mine.
Tarek knows where to find it.
All right. Going back then to the Tugus properties, page number 87 of our agenda. Looking for a resolution to approve the sale of the properties, yes?
I, I think I sent Tarek an email today, but it might have been late today, but I, I got a call from Mr. Tugus today, I, I've been trying to get ahold of him, because today was the last day for him to sign the purchase agreement, and he finally called me back, and he said he had to change the parts. He doesn't want to buy. So you don't need to bother with the resolution.
Well, I will move on. That's disappointing.
Yes.
Did we receive any earnest money, or anything that we need to discuss, whether or not it be returned?
No, um, you, you know, he needed to pay it with the signing of the purchase agreement, but he never signed the purchase agreement, he never brought any earnest money.
Okay, all right. So then we're down to the E道贷 loan for Savage Land Partnership, Tarek?
Yes, uh, this was a refinancing of the outstanding, or the balloon payment on Savage Land, which is Valley Industries. Uh, we discussed it and approved it at the last council meeting in August 22, 2022. Initially, though, we thought it would be due, or the debt, the first payment, that would be October 1, however, it is sooner, I think it, we would have to come up with something by, I think, September. We reached out to, uh, the company, and we let them know that if they, for the smoothest transition, would be if they close around this date. That way, the payments can, uh, continue on the same month, so August 24th or 25th will be the first payment.
Actually, July, they, they wanted to make their payment at the, at eight.
Probably.
He probably did, because he's got it set up on automatic pay.
Okay.
He might have paid it, I don't know, um, but, but I, they're aware that this is going through, being approved by the city and the partnership, and I just thought I'd get the government agencies to sign off on it before I got them in to sign, but I, I'm anticipating that they'll pay their payment, regardless of whether the paperwork's done, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe they will.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, this, uh, it's just closing sooner than we initially thought, but otherwise, it's all approved.
Excellent, with that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the amended agreement and other documents.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended economic development loan agreement slash business subsidy agreement, guarantee of payment, amended promissory note, and amended mortgage between City of Paintsville and Savage Land Partnership LLC.
Right, there's a motion by Thielen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, as stated on the action sheet, is there any further discussion? You're done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Page 102, ordinance change approving the elimination of the police and fire board, along with amending the ordinance prohibiting crossing the double yellow line, something that, I think the double yellow line we talked about at the public works work session. Council's approval of that, have the signs come down yet, or what's left of the signs?
Left of them.
Okay. So this has been posted, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 46/3 series.
So the next time we seal code to whatever, they'll be gone.
Well, I guess that's...
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 46/3 series.
Motion by Hertzberg to approve ordinance number 46/3 series, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soni, heard it there first, sorry, Megan. All those, are any further discussion? All in favor, they gave a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right, Ron or Chuck on the sewer rehab?
Yes, as the council may recall, the sewer was rehabilitated from Burner Street over to the school, there were sort of two separate quotes, one was from Boss that made care of the sag that was aligned right up by the school, about the other one was for the lining of it. Both, 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 everything's been completed as of last week. Boss completed the sag earlier in June, or mid-June, uh, and in your, in your packet is a copy of their invoice for the project, in the amount of $49,968.
And this was, the school contributed a chunk to this, right? Right. The school contributed, or the agreement was a behalf, which they have been invoiced for. And as ever before, it helped significantly drop our swole. We're talking somewhere between 80 to 100 dollars a day.
Wow.
That's a huge amount, yes.
And the correction, Boss completed, it was pretty much per plan, with the exception of the, the disturbance area got a little bigger, so on a unit price contract, they're paid for what they're sold for.
All right, so then with that, we're looking for a motion to approve the invoice, the amount of $49,968 on the rehab project.
I'll make the motion to approve Boss Plumbing and Heating invoice to the amount of $49,968 for completed sewer rehab project from Burner Street to the high school.
Right, motion by Hertzberg, is there a second? Seconded by Grant, any further discussion on that one? Right. Motion to approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Right, Ron asked that we poll item E, we'll bring that to our next council meeting, nuisance properties, we've discussed, as we discussed the various properties, nothing more there. So we have some things for informational, our garbage rates and reports, reports from the police department, letter from central care, concerns and various things, the one with the updates with our meeting schedule. So with that, we have nothing further, and I'll see you all in a few weeks, back at City Hall. I suppose we will be back next week, I am down in Minneapolis on Monday, so, uh, I will be here at some point for that open house. Don't make on me being here right when you guys start.